All right, folks, it is 1 o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. Thanks, everybody, for joining us today. You are here for the Natural Beauty Road Public Hearing regarding a proposal on Earhart Road, which we will get into, and we appreciate everybody joining us today on Zoom for our virtual public hearing. My name is Emily Kaiser, and I'm our Communications Manager here at the Road Commission, and I will be helping to moderate this meeting, as well as we have Brent Schlack here, who is our Assistant Director of Engineering, and he will be giving an overview of the proposal and helping to facilitate the meeting as well. Also with us today, before I dive into the housekeeping, we also have, just as listening in on this session, is we have Barb Fuller, who is one of our Road Commissioners. We also have Joanne McCollum, who is another Road Commissioner. We have John Allison here from Ann Arbor Township. He's a trustee. We have Cheryl Siddle, who is the Managing Director here at the Road Commission. We have Matt McDoel, who is the Director of Engineering here at the Road Commission, and we also have Jim Harmon, who is the Director of Engineering, or I'm sorry, Director of Operations. And they are here just to observe, and the purpose of this meeting is really to hear from you on your thoughts on this proposal. So before we dive into a brief overview, I would like to cover a few housekeeping items on this meeting. This is a virtual meeting, and we are hosting it today in an effort to try to prevent, to keep social distancing and to prevent the spread of the coronavirus. So thank you all for joining us in this new format. Just so you know, the meeting audio and video is being recorded, and it will be posted to the wcroads.org, which is our website, in the next day or two. After Brent does an overview of the proposal, you will be asked if you want to make public comment, and to do so, you will be asked to virtually raise your hand during that period. I'll provide instruction as we get closer to that part on how to do that exactly, and you can do that either from your computer, if you're joining us from your computer, or from a touchtone phone, and I'll explain how. And lastly, there is, chat is enabled on this presentation, but it really is for technical issues only. If you want to make a comment about the proposal, we ask that you do that by raising your hand and not providing that in the chat. If you want to provide written response to this proposal, we can show you how to do that at the end of the meeting, but the chat in this Zoom meeting is really for technical issues only. So with that, I will turn it over to Brent, who will lead us through an overview.
Thanks, Emily. Again, we are here for the Earhart Road, Natural Beauty Road Public Hearing. So we'll officially call to order the meeting. It's 1:03 on October 27, 2020. So just a brief overview of the Natural Beauty Road request process and some of the data that we collected. So let's go to the next slide, Emily. So we'll go through the purpose, why we're here, the natural beauty road background, our current proposal, and the criteria that we evaluated the road with, and our next steps, and then we'll ultimately open it up for public comment. You can go to the next slide. So the purpose of today is to report our findings of our evaluation and then collect a public comment on our proposal. So all comments today will be recorded and that we share with our Road Commission Board prior to the decision. The, so this will be reported, and then our board will make the decision on whether to approve or deny the Natural Beauty Road designation. You can go ahead to the next slide. So the, some background on the Natural Beauty Road Act. So it's a public act, Public Act 451 in 1994, and it mandates that all road agencies have a process of evaluating road segments. So we, this act was built through our legislators, and then our Road Commission Board adopting a policy to develop criteria to evaluate the Natural Beauty Road designation in order to designate it as a Natural Beauty Road. You can go to the next slide. So just a brief overview of the process. So we received a petition, and once we receive a petition, we are required to hold a public hearing within six months of the date of the petition or date we received the petition. The township, then, we send it for the township and for us to review that the signatures are valid. We schedule the public hearing. Our staff evaluates the roadway based on our criteria, and we report those findings here at this public hearing, and then ultimately we'll present it to, a summary to our board, and then our board will decide whether to approve or deny the Natural Beauty Road, Earhart Road as a Natural Beauty Road. Go ahead to the next slide. So just to go over some acceptable maintenance practices. So if the roadway was to be designated as a Natural Beauty Road, we still are allowed to mow the Natural Beauty Road as we would normally. We can grade the road, apply dust control, maintain the drainage along the road. So if it was to be designated, we still have the ability to maintain that surface and maintain the edges of that roadway based on our policy and our maintenance practices. So you can go to the next slide. So just a few more maintenance practices. So signing, we'll also be able to maintain the signs along the roadway, trim any trees or remove any trees that are causing hazards or sight distance or any issues with that roadway. We can maintain that road surface with any type of patching and then apply any safety improvements along the roadway, even though it would be designated a Natural Beauty Road. Also, at the limits of the Natural Beauty Road, if it was to be designated, there would be a sign designating that it is a Natural Beauty Road. So our current proposal is to designate Earhart Road between Warren Road and Joy Road in Ann Arbor Township as a Natural Beauty Road. You can go to the next slide. So here's a picture or a map of that. The total length is 1.32 miles, and we'll go through that criteria. That's within the criteria. You can go to the next slide. So on August 11th is when we received the petition in 2020. Our board officially accepted the petition on September 1st, and in Ann Arbor Township, they certified 28 valid signatures on the petition, and we need 25 in order to move forward with the petition and move forward through the public hearing. You can move on to the next slide. So just a timeline. So today is the public hearing. We will take and receive any verbal comments. Of course, we'll take any written comments as well. Well, we have a, on our website, we have the ability to provide any type of written comment. You can also email myself or our general WCRC email to provide any comment. We will leave the public comment open for any written comment until November 6th. And then our board will consider this, or we are going to ask that it be placed on the November 17th agenda. You can move to the next slide, too. So just to go through our criteria that's within our policy. So the first one is the character of the road, and the roadway must have outstanding natural features and be unique and distinctive. Of course, this is based on the eye of the beholder, but we have a lot of beautiful roads throughout our county, and what we look for is something that stands out from, you know, and that's unique and distinctive. You can move to the next criteria. So the length of the roadway and the volume, so it must be at least a half mile in continuous length and have an average daily traffic, that's a 24-hour volume of traffic. It should not exceed 500 vehicles per day. So the proposed segment that we measured was 1.32 miles, as I stated earlier, north of Warren. So we, this is a two-way count, so it's for both northbound and southbound traffic. We measured the volume of traffic of 762 vehicles per day, and south of Joy, we measured it 553 vehicles per day. You can move to the next slide. So development, so the existing development should be compatible with the surroundings. It should not detract from the natural and spoke character of the roadway. Preferably, there shouldn't be any development along the corridor. We did note through our evaluation, if you want to pop up our evaluation, that Washington Sand and Gravel is located at 4984 Earhart Road, which is on the northern end of the segment. You can move to the next criteria. So function and roadway condition. So it must be classified as a local access road, only serving adjacent property owners. It should have adequate design and drainage and safety. So our evaluation showed that the national functional class is a major collector road. So this is based on MDOT and FHWA. They classify the roadways, and this is what it was classified as. We did determine that the roadway did have adequate drainage. Of course, it could also, it could be improved, but it was adequate for the type of road. Vegetation, we measure the linear footage of vegetation along this segment. It should be a minimum of 90%, and this is excluding driveways or farmland. And when we did our measurement, we measured 91.5% of native vegetation and 8.5%, which was developed along this segment. So our next steps, we'll take additional public comment through November 6th beyond what is, we open up today, and then now our board will consider having this on their agenda for the November 17th.
Thanks, Brent. I did want to, oh, sorry, I just wanted to show to, this is the form, what it looks like on our website, if you want to make comment. I will show you at the end of the presentation how you can do that, but this is posted right to our website, which is wcroads.org, but we'll show you how to get to there after we take public comment in a minute. Right, is there anything you want to add before we switch to the public comment portion?
No, so we will open it up for public comment. Each individual will get approximately three minutes to provide their comment. We will, again, this is recorded, so we'll gather those comments and summarize those for our board.
Okay, thanks, Brent. So we will go into public comment now. So as a reminder, we're going to ask you to virtually raise your hand if you would like to make a verbal public comment today during this hearing. And to do that, if you are joining from your computer or smartphone or tablet, you should see, you want to make sure that you join audio, which it looks like everyone has, but you want to click Participants at the bottom of your screen, and then at the bottom right will pop up an option to raise hand. And then if you are dialing in and joining us from your touchtone phone, you can raise your hand by dialing *9 now. So if you'd like to make comment, please now, please raise your hand. Looks like we have, we had one.
Yeah, I don't see any.
Is there anybody that would like to make comment? It looks like John is going, has raised his hand. Hold on a second here, John.
Oh, there we go. We got some.
Yep, we're going to do this first come, first served. So, John, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, and John, you have, you can turn your video on for this if you'd like, or you can keep it off. That's up to you.
No, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, my name is John Pets. I'm with Domino's Farms Corporation, 24 Frank Lloyd Wright Drive, Ann Arbor Township, and we appreciate the work that the Road Commission has done in reviewing this matter, particularly the traffic count information. We did want to just point out, from our perspective, being a major employment center just south of this designated area, that our office facility at this point, really because of the COVID situation and the continued stay-at-home that most employers are applying to their workforce, is operating at really about 30% of our usual capacity, which we have nearly 3,000 people who work in this building on a daily basis. As a result of that, and even with regular residential patterns, we have certainly noticed that there is a significant decrease in the usual traffic that you would see around here. Now granted, most of our employees that work in this building will exit and enter the Domino's Farms complex from the south at the Plymouth-Earhart intersection, but we know that there is a substantial number that do commute north along Earhart Road and would travel through this section. In particular, we see that happen whenever there are traffic issues that are observable on US 23, which we have an advantage where you can actually see the backups from our complex, most of the employees can, and so they immediately know that if there's backups there, that they want to head north on Earhart and get up to the North Territorial Intersection Area where they can then make a decision of whether to, if they were heading north, to get back on 23 or follow it more like road up. So we know there's a substantial amount of traffic that traverses this road that would, is not currently being captured. In addition, I think it kind of reinforces the issue that Earhart really is a collector road, a major collector road between some of the other primary roads in the area, and it's questionable, from my mind, whether that, you know, the Natural Beauty Road is an appropriate designation when you have that volume of traffic that would be traveling through this area. Two other points I would just like to make quickly, you know, we are, and it was alluded to, we are, I think, in Ann Arbor Township blessed with a lot of very scenic roads. We have a beautiful township that we reside in, but I'm not certain that every scenic road deserves a specific designation. We have roads that it's very compatible for, like Ford Road between Dixboro and Earhart Road, but commuter roads, this doesn't seem to be an appropriate designation, particularly when there's, you know, fairly sizable commercial activities that traverse this area. And finally, I guess I'd just like to point out, you know, in this stretch of road, there's only about 12 property owners, of which Domino's Farms Land Development Company is one of those owners, and I understand that 25 signatures are necessary, but clearly the effort to have this designation is not coming from the people that are most immediately affected, and that is the residents that are along, or the property owners that are along this section. So I hope that the, the Road Commission takes those items into consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity to make some comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going to mute you again. Okay, perfect. And then it looks like we've got Carol is next. Carol, if you want to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon. My name is Carol Rugg, and I live off Joy Road and occasionally travel Earhart to get to Plymouth Road. I guess I'm a little confused by what this designation prohibits or excludes. You talked a lot about what you can do as a road commission to that road. What can't you or other drivers or other users of that road do once that designation is received? I had difficulty finding that on your website and even in the opening remarks today. So if someone could explain that, I think it would be helpful, and I'd be happy to re-mute.
Carol, we can, Brent can answer that, that question, and then if you would like to make comment based on what he answers, if you want to raise your hand again. But Brent, do you want to take a minute and just explain that real quick?
Sure. The Natural Beauty Road designation is really just something that residents along the roadway, you know, are, feel really close with their roadway and feel it's beautiful, and they want it designated with the state. So technically, all the designation does is it provides signage along the roadway, and it provides, it recorded up in Lansing that this roadway is a Natural Beauty Road. So other than that, we are allowed, you know, we don't make land use decisions, so if there's development along the roadway, then they can still come on, come in. They would need to maintain, if they access Earhart Road, they would need to make sure they had proper sight distance along that roadway, which would require for the safety of the roadway or that driveway. So, and we're still able to perform all of our normal practice and maintenance practices. So technically, this just gets it recorded and designated at the state level and some signs that would designate this as a Natural Beauty Road to inform drivers.
Okay, thanks, Brent. It looks like next to have, wanting to make comment is John Allison. John, I'm going to ask you to unmute, and then you can turn your camera on, okay? Go ahead.
Am I on? Thank you. Yeah, my name is John Allison. I have the privilege of being a trustee of Ann Arbor Township, and I'm representing Township Board. Diane O'Connell could not be here today, and she sends her regrets. She had a prayer commitment. So the Township Board has provided the Road Commission a resolution of support for this designation. I just wanted to acknowledge that and indicate that the township, of course, for well over two decades, has, the rural character has been an important part of our character. Township residents have invested heavily in that through their PDR initiative, only the second in the state, and part of that is the scenic beauty, and these country lanes are a major part of that. And certainly, I think that one of the, the most scenic routes in the township is this particular stretch of Earhart Road. And so, as I said, the Township Board has provided you a resolution of support for this, and so that's all I really had to say.
Okay, thanks, John, and I know that that Township Resolution will be part of the summary that we provide to the Road Commissioners, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, looks like next is Rob Wilson. Rob, if you want to unmute, and like I said, you can turn your video on if you want to, and we should be able to hear you.
Okay, you can hear me?
We can, yep, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yep, you can go ahead.
I'm with, Mr. Gimmaterials, the new owner of what, what is commonly referred to as Washington Sand and Gravel at 4984 Earhart Road.
Hey, Rob, I'm sorry to, Rob, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's kind of, you're kind of going in and out. I wonder if you turn your video off, if we'll be able to, if that'll be better for your internet.
... this business and are kind of getting organized and obtaining the conditional.
Oh.
Will, is that better?
A little bit. Try again.
As I say, we just, we just acquired, went through a pretty lengthy conditional, yep, nope. Let me, let me, let me move to a different area. Sorry, weak cell signal here, apparently. So we acquired this business just a couple of months ago, right around the time, it sounds like you got a petition for this, and we have a conditional use permit now through the township, and I guess just a couple of concerns that I wanted to note throughout this is, I understand the purpose of the designation, but it kind of feels like a, like a future attack, if you will, on our, on our business, because this was never brought up prior to us obtaining a conditional use permit, and I fail to understand why it needs to happen, because we have within our permit that, you know, an agreement that we can't seek certain designations for the road without, without first going back to the township. So it seems like that level of protect, protection for the citizenry is already in place. In addition, just the way I'm reading your numbers, it sounds like, even though Domino's Farms is running at 30% capacity, if I read what your presentation said today correctly, then you're already in excess of what would allow for such a designation, so I just wanted to note that. And I guess I would need some clarification if it were to happen, because part of my conditional use permit requires me to have dust applications and control the dust, but yet this calls for, at least the way I read it, minimal dust application. So it sort of is almost prohibiting me from being compliant with my, with my permit. So, and I guess just, with those factors, I just wanted, wanted to note for the board to consider.
Okay, thank you, Rob. I'll mute you again. And it looks like we have Carol. Carol, go ahead and unmute, and if you want, you can turn your video on.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
You are, yep, we can hear you.
I guess I want to go back to the explanation I was given about the designation itself and what it implies. I guess I'm not clear, does getting the designation allow traffic to be restricted? The number of cars or trucks or size of trucks that can use Earhart Road?
In short, no. Brent, do you want to clarify at all?
No, it doesn't restrict public use of Earhart Road. And furthermore, the Road Commission, if this was to be designated, we do have the duty to review our Natural Beauty Roads every five years. So if, if this was to become designated, and there was some purpose or some reason that we felt that through our review, that the designation no longer applied, then it could be taken back up by our board to rescind that designation.
Carol, if you want to make a comment on that, you're welcome to raise your hand again. I know this is a little bit of an odd format. We do have David. I'm going to ask you to unmute, David. You are next in line.
Hi, my name is David Kinzicki, and I am a taxpayer here on Joy Road, which is right around the corner from Earhart. We've been living in this area for 15 years, and I did, I apologize, I did come late to the, to the meeting, but I'm not exactly sure what a Natural Beauty Road is, and I probably missed all that, but if it means not paving it, I'm all for paving the dirt roads. We've had numerous accidents, my, I have eight kids, and they have been in ditches because of ice in the summer, or in the wintertime. I have seen a guy flip his car right outside of Mother Teresa Drive because the roads are too narrow and they're rutted, and the bumps have damaged our cars. And so if this is some sort of action that's being taken as a result of not wanting to improve our roads, which in my opinion, in 2020, we should have paved roads, especially for the amount of money that we pay for our taxes. Natural beauty trees, things like that being removed, as far as I'm concerned, it's great. If I want to go see trees, I could go see those in the park, but when it comes to safety of my kids and my family, I want to have roads that are actually functional and that can be maintained in the wintertime with salt and the proper things that other taxpayers in this county are allowed to have. So that's my comments. Sorry for not being here earlier. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. We did cover what is allowed and what wouldn't be allowed in for a Natural Beauty Road. Brent, do you want to just briefly touch on that?
Sure. So we have certain criteria that we evaluate the roadways by, and not to go through the presentation again, but we look at the length of the road, the character of the road, whether or not development is contained along the segment of road as to be designated. We look at the function of the road. It, it must function as a local access road. That's the definition, that is one that serves the adjacent property owners. The roadway condition, we review that, and then the, the traffic volume. So we did, we, this is recorded, so if you want to watch it at a later time, you're more than welcome to, and if you have further comment, we certainly can take those as a written comment, and Emily will show the email address that you can send that to here in a minute, or you can, we have an online form.
Yeah, and to, just to add to that, having a Natural Beauty Road designation does not prevent us from doing, making sure that the road is what it needs to be in drainage and mowing and all of those things, but David, you can see that in the presentation, as Brett mentioned, that we'll post joyly. Okay, so we have Sister Maria, we have you. Go ahead and unmute, and you can share your video if you'd like to.
Thank you. I'm Sister Maria Gem. I'm the Principal of Spiritus Sanctus Academy at the corner of the north piece of Earhart on Joy. And I guess I have a question. With the Natural Beauty Designation, does that also come with a reevaluation of the speed limit on a road? I know that because the way the hills are and the way, you know, the, the road is, people tend to travel it very, very fast, and that's a concern for our school. People tend to travel it very, very fast, and that's a concern for our school families. So I didn't know if a designation of a certain speed limit came with it, or if one could be proposed for it. I was just curious.
No, the, the speed limit's not adjusted or modified based on the designation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that is everybody that has virtually raised their hand. I'll just do a quick reminder here, if you're just joining us. If you'd like to make public comment on the proposal about Designating Airheart Road as a natural beauty road or a portion of Airheart Road as a natural beauty road. In order to make that comment today, you can, if you're joining us from your computer or smartphone, If you click the participants button at the bottom of your screen, you should see then on the right side a raised hand button. And if you are joining us from your touchtone phone, if you want to dial star nine at this time, you can make comment. It looks like we've got a hand raised by Deanne. Deanne, go ahead and you can unmute. And you can share your video if you want. And Deanne, I have forgotten to ask until now, so I apologize that you're the one I'm starting with. But if you want to share your name and your address, if you're comfortable, just so we know where people are commenting from, that helps us in our, our report as well.
Absolutely. My name is Deanne Rundell. I live at 4210 Airheart Road. So I live on the road that is currently being proposed as a natural beauty designation. We, the neighbors, I believe, we actually came together several months ago around a different issue in the neighborhood. And as a result, I think it became very clear how much all of us really value The, the, the road, Airheart Road, and, and what it brings to the community. There's lots and lots of beautiful, mature, old trees along that road. There's natural bottles of water, and we, I think, really, what came out of our meetings is just how much we appreciate living in such a beautiful environment. And one of the neighbors asked about this particular designation, and we know there's, there's not really anything that is going to limit or change What the road commission may decide to do at a later date, and it can be revoked at any time. We, we understand all that, and we understand that It can't be taken away at a, at a certain point in the future. But it just felt like important to us to just Recognize and celebrate the road as it is because it's so beautiful. It's, it's just so peaceful and tranquil. And we just wanted to celebrate it as the people who live on it who enjoy living there every day. So it's really that simple. We don't, we're not looking for any special treatment or anything. We just, we just wanted to be recognized as, as what we think it is. And, and it is, does seem to be a very beautiful place that people enjoy going to, because we have lots of people who are bikers and walkers. And I think there's just a lot of enjoyment out of that road and, and appreciate it for what it is. So that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment today, a verbal comment? I don't see anybody at this time. We'll do, give it one more try on my instructions and go ahead, give it a one last try. So if you're joining us from your computer and you'd like to make comment, if you want to click the join audio button, which it looks like everyone has, And then click participants, which you'll see at the bottom of your screen. And then the raise hand button will show up on the bottom right hand of your screen. If you're joining us from your touchtone phone, you can make a public comment or virtually raise your hand by dialing star nine at this time. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment today? Okay, without seeing anybody else, we will Just close today to show you a couple of different ways, if you decide you would like to provide additional comment to be included in our report to the board. Now through November 6, you can do that. If you want to do it by mail, you can mail us a letter at 555 North Zee Road. You can do that by email by emailing wcrc@wcroads.org. If you put Airheart Road in the subject line, that will help us get it to the proper place faster. You can also fill out an online form on our website, which is wcroads.org, and I'll show you where that is. Wait one second here. On our website, if you go to our homepage here, You can see it shows up at the, you can scroll all the way to the bottom, and under this news and meeting notices, Here we've got the form right here, seeking public comment, Airheart Road, proposed natural beauty road designation. And then there's an online form that'll appear that you, we just ask for your name, address, and then you can provide any written comment that you'd like to. And we'll include that in the board packet if it's submitted before November 6. So with that, we, Brent, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate all the comments and appreciate you listening through our presentation. Like Emily said, if you, there are written comments that you'd like to submit, please do so before November 6. And Hopefully, this will go before our board on the 17th and November 17th. And It's an open meeting, so people are welcome to join. I believe those are virtual too, right, Emily?
Yep, our board needs to be virtual through the year. Yeah, and just to mention too, a shout out, I know there were a couple of questions that came up about maintenance or speed limits. We have a lot of information answering those questions on our website. We have put a lot of effort into our FAQs. So if you have any interest in road related issues and want to learn more, really encourage you to check out wcroads.org. We also post things like this to our calendar, our upcoming board meeting information. Really a lot of information on there if you are curious. So thank you, everybody, again for joining us, and we will leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.